States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Trying to think of 10 things at once. Okay, I'd like a motion to approve the agenda. Steve and then Katie. I'd like to add 7.2, little discussion on board goals and priorities for 2025-26. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Make a motion to approve the minutes for the August 20th and the August 27th special meeting. Do I have a motion? Katie?
I'll second.
And second, Julie. Any questions on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item five, presentation and awards and acknowledgements and correspondence. 5.1 Strategic Plan and District Goals.
You can scroll if you'd like.
Since I can walk around.
I can flip it around the other way if you would like that way. Yep.
I'll go from here for a second.
Can you see over there?
Can you see that?
Yeah, we're good.
Because we can also see over there. Can you see that? I wonder if I can. There you go. Is that better? Is that too big?
No.
That's why I couldn't face it. Okay, now I'm going to come this way. I can't see it. Like, I don't know. It's like small. Sorry.
This one?
The.
Superbowl, sorry.
Nope.
Well, the one thing is probably come down. Okay.
Not that one. Okay, now I can see. I was having a hard time. So tonight, I'm going to share with you my goals that come from the strategic plan. It comes from our data from last year and some course correction that you're going to see in my goals. But first, before I get into the goals, I want to share with you the compilation of data that has come in from last year. We're still missing just a few pieces, but most of it is here. So we are going to start with the performance index goals for the New York State ELA and math state exams. And so what is a performance index? It is set by New York State. We are given that goal. And it is a compilation of level twos, level threes, and level fours. So when a student scores on a New York State test, they get a number in a range, and it equates to a level one, two, three, or four. So for a level one, you don't receive any points. For a level two, you receive partial points. For a level three and four, the points are awarded because they consider levels three and four passing. Then it's divided by the number of students that were tested. And that's how the state comes out with a performance index. And so they set that for us based upon the goal that they want us to achieve. So you will see in 2024 what performance index goals were achieved. So we had 98 for Lincoln, 188.3 for Perkins, 84.29 for Kelly, and 100.27 for middle school. And then the goal set right in the middle is what the state set for us for all students. And Kelly's school met the actual goal. The goal set for us to achieve last year was 96.3, and we received 96.45. And for middle school, the goal was 86.6, and we met it with 87.86. So we very closely met our goal. Now, next week, or in two weeks, Donna's going to share all of the three through eight data by grade level, by band, by subject. It's still embargoed somewhat, and we have not been able to get parent reports out or share it with people because of the state. So the state pulled back everything and then just released stuff again. So our parent reports will go out, and parents will get notification on how their kids did in the beginning of next week. So following that, we'll present fully on what that looks like. But overall, this is how we did cumulatively. Doesn't mean every grade level hit their goal, but overall, we've met our performance index that we should have met by New York State. Students with disabilities in 2024 for Kelly's school, they were at 20.75. And although they did not meet their goal, they did increase by 10 points to 30.61. And middle school declined from 60 to 50. So students with disabilities at the middle school will be an area of focus. For our black subgroup at Kelly's school, they exceeded the goal by 24 points. So that's exciting news that they did an excellent job there. So they were at 65.22 in 2024. Our goal was around 70, and they're at 94 if we round up 95. So excellent progress at Kelly. However, at the middle school, you will see that that number declined almost in half. And so what we will be doing is digging in and understanding what happened. It could be a variety of things. It could be the number in the subset. It could be the incoming sixth graders. That cohort was low to begin with. It could be the outgoing eighth graders that there was a shift in numbers. So there's a variety of things, and we'll be digging in to see what happened in that subgroup. And then our economically disadvantaged, although it went down, it remained within the 70s, so kind of just flat. But overall, big picture, when you combined all those students, we met our goal. For I Ready. I Ready sets our performance indexed for us, and it looks a little bit different than the formula that I shared from the state. And you can see in green is where we should have been in the winter, and then the overall ELA goal. And the green for the actual shows us that we made the growth that we were looking for and met our goal for Lincoln, Perkins, and Kelly, making progress. Where we didn't make that full progress and reach our goal was at the middle school. But you can see we went from 58 to 68 to 76. So again, so some good progress there, just not hitting the 86.6. When you see our students with disabilities, we met our winter PI, but we did not meet the final PI for ELA. But again, some growth for our students with disabilities from 19 in the beginning of the year to 35 at the end of the year. And then our students with disabilities at the middle school, again, not making the growth that we're looking for. And our ELA for our black subgroup, going from 66 to 85 for Kelly's school, and growth for our middle school, again, but not at the progress level that we're looking for. And then here is the same thing that I explained for ELA, but for math. This is our performance index. And you can see that for Kelly's school in 2024, we were at 108, and we did take a decline in math this year for all students, and we did not reach our goal. We are at 96.58. And at middle school, we are higher than we were in 2024, but we also did not reach our goal. We're very flat there. Students with disabilities in middle school did fabulous. If you look down there, from 29 percent, or 29.41, not percent, up to 52.94 for the middle school in math. But at Kelly's school, again, we did not hit our goal. When we look at our black subgroups, we've gone from 78 to 77. So we were already higher than the goal that was set, and so we remain consistent there. And in 2024, we were at 41, but we did take a dip at the middle school for that subgroup. And so that seems to be consistent with ELA as well. So we'll be digging in and looking at what is the root cause of that decline for that subgroup. And then economically disadvantaged, it went up. We didn't reach our goal, but we did go up from 55 to 61. So you can see just from looking at those scores where we have pockets that need to be addressed. When we look at math for all students, you can see Lincoln and Perkins not only met their goal, but they exceeded it at the end of the year. And by a lot, from 90 to 136, and from 87 to 143. You can see that Kelly's students made growth and just missed it by one point there. Instead of 104, they were at 103. And then middle school didn't reach their goal, but increased from 56 to 65 to 70. Our students with disability in math did not again reach their actual goal. However, they made growth. And in middle school, they made growth, but did not come close to reaching that goal. And I think that you'll see when we look at our math scores more in depthly when Donna and Rainey come to look at the cohorts and the change, you'll see where those subgroups are underperforming in those areas as it correlates. And then in our black subgroup, at Kelly's school, we exceeded our goal. And at middle school, we've made progress, but we did not reach the goal. Here's where we start looking at high school. So I'm going to just stop there with the ELA and math, three through eight in the performance index and just in the I Ready, and just see if you have any questions, because that's, you know, three through eight before I get into some high school data. So our graduation rates are not in yet. So we have what we believe through our own tabulation for graduation rates. And the actual, we believe, is 87 for our high school and 85 percent for all, which is our out-of-district placements. And then for students with disabilities, we have exceeded our goal of 69.8 percent with 73.7 percent for students with disabilities for our high school. But when we look and include our out-of-district placements, it's 16.9 percent. The biggest area of concern that I have as a superintendent is in our region scores. And you'll see that I have some very specific goals set in my goals numerically for Algebra I. We did not do well. So we've gone from 47 percent last year, or in 23, 24. In 24, 25, we set the goal, and we only hit 38 percent. So we declined drastically there. The rest of them fell pretty flat. So Biology 54 to 56, Global 79 to 76, US History 85 to 83, and then we made an improvement from 64 to 72 to 78. But we did not hit the goals that we set for ourselves in those areas. And when we look at students with disabilities, we actually went from 16 percent in Biology to 36 percent this year, so that was a positive increase. We went from 13 percent to 17 percent in Algebra. We went from 35 percent to 53 percent in Global. We took a dip in US History and Government and in ELA. So some growth in three of those areas. What you'll see as one of the identified problems that we will be correcting is our quarterly assessments that we have changed and realigned as part of our strategic plan are not predicting outcomes on Regents exams. So our quarterly assessments show a higher level of proficiency than what actually students are achieving. So we will be going back to the drawing board. We'll be looking at the gap analysis that is done from the Regents exam, seeing where we don't have priority standards built into our quarterly assessments and where we need to reassess the task analysis and assessment process to be correlated with those exams. And then when we look at mastery, you can see we are not successful in that level of a high percentage of students passing with 85 percent or greater. And they've stayed pretty consistent. So it's not different from what you've seen in the past, but it hasn't had growth. But we did have growth for our students with disabilities in both Biology and Algebra, but not certainly to the level that we're looking for. And again, this is our students with disabilities and the quarterly assessments. And you can see that there's not a strong correlation at the end of 30 weeks. And that 30-week test should really be a strong predictor of how kids are going to do. So when we look at some of the questions that we ask our kids, including my teacher's lessons are based upon my learning needs, strengths, and/or interest, you will see that the winter goal was exceeded in all grades. However, as we proceeded to go toward the end of the year, that momentum was lost or flat. And so we're going to be looking at that as well. And we see some trends like that, where things are very strong in the winter and in the fall. And then in the spring, things seem to lose some momentum, and the actual feedback in the end is not what you would hope to see, where the growth would be going in a pattern of trajectory that continues to increase. And so when we look at our data, so we look for 80 percent or more of implementation in the following areas of hitting our goals. And this is really what, as administrators, we go through and we look at in the classrooms. Are we seeing it? Are we not seeing it? And this is a culmination of all grade levels and all administrators in all buildings. And they have to do a certain number so that we know that the N number is at least contributing to a valid outcome. So what you see here for differentiation is our goal was 80. We're seeing it 81 percent of the time. Small group instruction, 79 percent, missed it by 1 percent. Specially designed instruction, 71 percent versus 80 where we wanted to land. The co-teaching model in special education classrooms, we're not seeing the progress that we want to be making, and that is built into our strategic plan again. Formative assessment pieces, we have met all of our goals in that area, as well as higher order thinking and student engagement. What we're not seeing to the level that we would hope to see is learning targets differentiated for small groups of students. And so we've talked a lot about this data, because if we're seeing this all the time, then that should be contributing to higher levels of achievement in Regents scores and in New York State assessments, to be frank and honest. So part of what we will be changing based on this is our instructional council. So every, once a month on Mondays, we meet with an administrative team around instruction. We are now doing that every other month, but that will be solely based on professional development needs around calibrating and looking at what does this truly look like at a highly effective, in a highly effective forum? And if it's not highly effective, how do we give direct feedback to change that pedagogical approach in the classroom and to reconnect it back and then follow up in that feedback loop to go back and take a look at that? And so retraining and recalibrating everybody for what they're looking for as they go in so that we have administration that is all on the same page. Culture and climate, here's where we saw a great deal of growth is in referrals. And what we're doing, the work of the security in our schools, the focus area with some restorative practices. And every school hit their target, with the exception of Lincoln, who actually had an increase, which is a little strange, because it's a highly effective school that operates in that capacity. But we did lose some staff members at a tier-three level there who were working very solidly with some behaviors mid-year, and we think that that could be part of the cause of that increase. But you can see that Perkins School in June of 2023 had 682 referrals. They're actually down to 308. Kelly's school had 307. In 2024, they went up. They're back down. And their goal was 589, and they came in underneath that. The middle school went from 1,600 down to 787, and the high school went from 2,800 down to 1,588. So some great growth there with behavior. And it's certainly something we've been trying to hit for the period of time with this strategic plan. Our chronically absent students still is very high. We've decreased that. We've had a lot of efforts across all schools. So we were at 37.9. We went down to 37.1, which is not growth, it's flat. But this year, we're down to 29.1. What you'll see is the high school is still the hottest area for chronic absenteeism. What this will look like next year, I'm unsure. We will have some strong, very organized systemic warning systems in place with John Ginther now being over MTSS and having a distinct focus on this. But the state is also changing its formula. So this is students who miss 10 percent or more. Is it 18? What's the 18 days? 18 days or more. This formula will look different. It'll look just like a performance index. So it will be, students' absenteeism will be leveled, like level one, level two, level three, level four. Twos will get partial points, threes will get a set of points, fours will get a greater set of points for being in school, and then it'll be divided over the number of students. So how that will equate and what that will look like, it will not be comparing apples to apples. But hopefully, the formula will be more fair and in line with a true representation of absenteeism. And absenteeism has changed too in that formula that we currently use, because it is excused and unexcused. Where before, it used to be just unexcused absences. Now, you know, even if you have COVID, it counts against seat time and instructional time, so it adds to chronic absenteeism. This is for our students who are in our extended day program and their I Ready scores in both reading and math from the fall to the spring diagnostic. And it's busy, so I'm not going to go through all of this. But what you will see in the first two columns where it says January and Spring, those are the number of students enrolled in the program. So then you will see in this next column here, the number of students in January and Spring that made increases in ELA, the number of students in January and Spring that made increases in math. And then when you combine math and ELA together, those last two columns are that culmination of math and reading together and the correlation of increases for those students. Our students on track for our social emotional learning competencies have met the goal. In October 2024, it was 60 percent. In January, we're at 62. This year, our goal was 67, and we are at 68. When we look at the implementation of social emotional learning instruction, we are at 100 percent implementation. Our tier fidelity inventory really looks at how fluidly and competently our MTSS system is working. Perkins at tier three is a little bit lower than the others, so there will be a distinct focus on tier three for Perkins School. And high school really needs some strong implementation of MTSS, and that is where John's already started some distinct focus. Is there a positive culture in the school? We went from, our goal was 62 percent in January, and at the end of the year, we went down to 60 percent. I do feel like yesterday, the day was really positive throughout the day. A lot of smiling faces, and not because of the comedian, but I think just happy people to be back. And I think it was a good start. So I think people are feeling positive. Our community and family partnerships. This is for people who responded to the survey. And we never know which parents respond, so it could be a completely different subset of parents that responded the first time with the second time. And the number is not hugely high either with the input. So when you look at, our school has programs for students, so we can help our children at home. You'll see, like, in October, 65 percent of people who took it felt that way. In January, 65 percent of people. But at the end, only 52 percent of people felt like that. So I would say that So I would say that different people probably took that because the programs for students consistently go throughout the year that help students at home. And the amount of staff that shows up, especially at the, the younger schools for that is, is often a high number. Especially for like a math night or ELA night. We have very well attended events. Well-planned events for families and children, 82%. Our school helps us prepare children for being college career ready, 59%. We did not hit our mark there and as a parent, I feel connected to our school, 64%. And we have implemented across every building, all of the events that we said we were going to at the beginning of the year. And so that concludes all of the data that correlates with the strategic plan. So as you think about strategic planning and you go to the end of our strategic plan, we have our, what we must do in our strategic plan, how we are going to do it, and then how we are going to measure what we do. This is the measurement from last year of all of the things that we have done. This is the same measurement that will go forward this year with new goals based upon the data, looking to increase. And when we look at my goals now, the goals are built upon the strategic plan and our district comprehensive improvement plan. You'll see them built into my goals. You'll see some of them worded differently based upon some of the data that this has shown now at the end of the year. And you will see specific goals from me built in here from Super Eval. So I extracted some things from some of the categories that I think are pertinent to focus on based upon where we're going as a district. Not all of them, but some key areas that, that I think that I, I would like to do at a higher level or be very diligent about this year.
Sue, I, I have a quick question. The last few graphs showing the surveys, the goal shifted, changed to the end of the year from earlier in the year. What's the rationale behind changing the goals? Well, there was the survey for parents and the survey for students. And a number of different things there, the last couple pages.
So the goal goes higher.
Right.
Right, so what we're looking for is that we keep improving, right? So in, in the fall, like we get a dipstick, in the winter, we get a dipstick. And that kind of tells us like, are we doing a good job in comparison to who responded? And what do we need to do better and then we try to self-correct or improve. Does that help you?
Yeah.
So we're always looking for continuous improvement. I feel like maybe I didn't answer right, like is that, is that where I'm looking?
Yes.
Okay.
I just, one question out of curiosity and this may be something you just have to get back to me on, but looking at the culture and climate section in priority two. I just noticed like Perkins and Lincoln's numbers are so different, but their building populations are similar, right? Like what, is there a reason why, like, what would be something that maybe would impact Perkins having so many more referrals than Lincoln with a similar age group?
So Lincoln's school has only a shape classroom with six students with special needs. Perkins has a continuum of students with disabilities. And they enter as kindergarteners there. And many students who have special needs may not be identified. And so in those early years, we really go through the process of trying to help any student who needs that additional assistance or could be incorrectly placed. And, and also like in those scenarios, Perkins is bigger, right? So you've got a variety of more students entering that building as well. And so as kids come into the building at kindergarten, there's more children who have an opportunity not to have been in preschool, understand the rules. Any of those, any of those things. But the continuum of classes that's offered at Perkins is different than Lincoln's school. Thank you.
I have one question about absenteeism. I remember thousands of years ago, if I tried to skip school, Rupert Murdoch would come and get me. He pulled me out of the, your host many times. For, for you, for most of you people who aren't as old as I am, that was a restaurant. Change. So do we do that? Do we go, go get kids?
We do have early warning systems. And if we believe that they are at risk, we do have processes that we use. I, I can't say as if we are out there looking for kids like the truant officer that used to exist, that does not exist today. So we will go to doors and knock on them looking for kids. But we are not doing the full truancy officer thing that happened back in the day, right? For you? Yeah. Okay, so here's the goals for this year. And I'm going to just start by going back to our strategic plan and rooting our goals for both myself, the district, our DESEP and your board goals into our vision and our mission. And I just want to remind everybody that the vision is aspirational. It's what we strive for every single day. It's the highest of desires that we have. And so that we are the centerpiece of our community, that it brings together staff, families and neighbors through pride. That we are engaging all students with diverse opportunities, academic experiences. Because our goal is that what we offer reaches each student's maximum potential and that we have opportunity and access for everybody to do that. And that we have an environment of high expectations, collaboration and respect that is facilitated by that effective communication and those connections that foster a sense of importance. That contribute to every student every day. That is who we aspire to be every single day. And I, I just, you know, when you think about that aspirational goal, it's like what we do as individuals. We, like many of us aspire to be healthy every single day or exercise every single day. And then how you get there is the mission. And so we say we educate and engage every day to empower for tomorrow. So that's the difference between the vision and mission. Our vision's aspirational and our mission is what we try to accomplish every single day and believe in. And it goes right along with our core values. The theory of action, I think, is probably one of the, the, the key pieces to our strategic plan because it's that if and when statement, right? So everything that we believe, our vision, the mission that we want to accomplish every day, our core values, the actions that we set for us to achieve the goals is really through this. Because what we're saying is if we ensure that we have a differentiated rigorous instructional program and that we can deliver that program in a safe supportive environment where all students feel a sense of belonging, then we are going to graduate students that are ready for that post-secondary career or college. And so that's why we have such a distinct focus on meeting kids' individual needs, creating programs that are robust with high expectations in that environment where they feel that they belong so that they can graduate that way. And ready to go out into the world. I don't understand why it's coming across this way. Where it's going off the side. It's not, it's not like that in your document, is it? No. It's not, it wasn't like that. So I'm going to use my document to speak with you because I don't know why it's looking like that on the screen here. Is it, maybe it's because I made it bigger, hang on, let me shrink it. I can solve my own problem. There we go. I think that's pretty good. Each one of those is supposed to be on a separate page, which I think it is in your, in your thing. So academic programming. Our goal as a district is to have a rigorous, relevant, coherent curriculum and assessments that are aligned to the New York State standards and implemented in a differentiation or in a differentiated engaging manner for all students. There are only two things this year that we are focusing on because we are coming in and we're refining, we're, we're going down to the granular. We're going to use our data to drive the instructional planning and decision-making. And we are going to implement high-quality differentiated and specially designed lessons through strong instruction. And so that is the condensed version of how we're going to continue the growth. So what does it mean for a data-driven decision-making culture? It means that we are going to use all of the data to either pivot what we're doing. Like our quarterly assessments, we see now that they're not aligned to the Regents and we're going to relook at them and pull in those priority standards. We're going to do the gap analysis, we're going to look at where we did not do well and then course correct, right? Reset what instruction looks like in those areas based on what we've learned from that last Regents exam and what we've learned from those quarterly assessments. We are going to continue to use data within our PLCs to refine instruction, to plan together, to collaborate on those Wednesdays to aid in the instructional process around creating differentiated lessons that support the needs of all students and for students with IEPs specially design that instruction. All around, learning targets, success criteria, small group targeted or individualized instruction and assessments that are aligned to the task in the New York State learning standards. That's, seems like it's just a small feat, but it's a big, a big thing to, to take on and chew, but it's focused. And that's where we want to be, a focused look at what we're doing, not all over the board. So we will be doing the walkthroughs to progress monitor the delivery and then provide feedback. And that goes to how our instructional council meetings with administrators are shifting. From PD about doing those walkthroughs, about being calibrated at a higher level than we are. And then giving some direct feedback to staff and then cycling back through so that the instruction becomes stronger. And, and that we're using that data to drive that. We will be implementing co-teaching models aligned to the learning goals with intention, with intentionality. So prior to this, we've done some professional development around the six different models of co-teaching. Now we want to ensure that they're connected to the lesson planning and that we're seeing that on a regular basis. Here's where we have realigned quarterly assessments to Regent exams to ensure alignment with New York State standards. You won't find that in our strategic plan because that wasn't in there, that's in my goals based upon. It was in our strategic plan and we did do it. And now we're seeing that there's not the correlation, so we're going to go back. And that's going to be something that I'm going to ensure and work with Donna based upon that feedback. Here's something that I put in myself because I feel like it's pertinent that this happens. Increase the passing rate of Algebra I scores on June Regents to a minimum of 60%. And with an aspirational goal of 82, which is what we said we should be reaching at this point. So to move from 38 to 60 and hopefully 82 by the end of this year with a distinct focus in that area. What you'll see then, and you can't tell on here, but those last ones are a little bit highlighted in like a cream color. That's because I took those instructional goals out of Super Eval. So that's part of what is in Super Eval for me. And I've put it in here because it fits in this category, right? So ensuring that I can demonstrate knowledge and comfort with the instructional programs by communicating with others how the district is implementing best practices. So I can just say delivered this tonight and add it underneath that as one of the things, right? So this is something that you do evaluate me on within Super Eval, so we're putting it right here. Participate actively in professional development groups and organizations and facilitate long and short-term goals for the district. Those three are from Super Eval, okay? Culture and climate, we're down to two, right? Building sustainable systems and structures through a multi-tiered system of support and supporting a climate of collegial and systematic communication and safety. Those are the big things, how are we going to do this? This is really that sustainable system and structure is that multi-tiered system of support, right? Having one person who has a distinct focus on it, doing an audit on it, identifying where we do not have congruency across buildings. Identifying what needs to be put in place, looking at our early warning system, where do they exist that are strong, where do they not exist? How do we combat, combat that high level of absenteeism at the high school? What's working, what's not, readjusting that. So you'll see, we'll be doing that with some distinct purpose, especially once the audit is done. And that will be in the areas of academic, ACL, behavior and absenteeism. So how do we build strong AIS programs and intervention for the math and ELA, right? For our Regents exams. What students are going and getting services? Do we have the right students? How do we better connect with our extended day program to build that connection of services into that for students who need remediation and/or acceleration, right? How do we hit the needs of all learners to make them go to a higher level? There will be an action plan that either reaffirms or enhances the early warning intervention and monitoring system through K to 12. We will use academic data to target individualized skill groups in that extended day program. And we hope to reevaluate that alternative education program that we've already looked at. But is there any way that we can move forward with something like that in the future and allocate our resources that way? And then when we look at supporting a climate of collegiality and, or collegial and systemic communication, it's really about how do we build restorative practices into our code of conduct? So students are building relationships along with having some of those consequential outcomes that the code of conduct indicates. So it's utilizing our ATS rooms to a higher level. The first five kids that are suspended will go into those rooms because they automatically get tutoring and counseling support or monitoring check-ins, check-outs, things to help them and rebuild relationships with students, teachers and all of those elements to support going back out and not making the same choices again, right? It's about working with parents and building those relationships. Full implementation of the recruitment and retention plan that we started last year. And then I think in two board meetings from now, you're going to get an update of where we are with safety and security and all of the interconnection between Genetech, all the tech pieces. Mike Ishler will be here with us to just show where we are with the integration of all of those pieces. And then here's where we've also made a change. So if you remember, MTSS and grants and family and communication is all in one job. That's why we separated it out to make things different and have a distinct focus. So you have Mr. Ginter, who's now over that MTSS up in culture and climate to make a difference in that and really focus on that. And Julia Solan, who's now down here, who's able to really focus just on those community partnerships and that, that strong community base. And so our goal is really to, to kick off a mentorship program, create that, number one. What do we need to build in it to make it strong? And then seek out the folks that And then seek out the folks that would be great to have included in that program, do the training, and then implement that program with our local community businesses and focus on career exploration. We're going to be, every school has identified three local businesses where we're going to hang work of our students up in the community. So there should be 15 places around our community with student work that changes on a regular basis that you should see. Building and repairing relationships with family and building that trust through restorative approaches, approaches. Holding three fireside chats. I did them in the beginning. I'm going to do them again, but not here, out in the community in different spots for people to comment and just talk throughout the year. Increase the positive publications. We do this every year. We really had so many positive publications go out last year. Brunda Stories increased regularly. They're always on the web. And then professional development opportunities also for our families. We're going to create a parent advisory council. We're always looking for ideas from parents, but it's, we're always polling them. We're going to have a council where we can just have feedback on a regular basis from a community group of parents. And then add students to the Board of Education, and we've done that, so. And then what you will see are things that I've extracted from Super Eval down here. Relationship with the board, community relations, staff relations, and business and finance, right? So things that I thought were pertinent that I would like to work on based upon my own reflection within those categories.
How, how do you plan on keeping us informed as you go through all of this throughout the year? Are there going to be specific presentations?
So every year, as you know, mid-year, I give you an update of where we are with all of the implementation of what is out here, with all of the evidence that we've done, and we do a mid-year data collection piece with the data that we can collect. I also write to you a weekend letter with information in that. If there are things that you want more of, then I would ask that you let me know, and we can provide those presentations. So in the past, if you wanted a presentation, we try to get that on so that you can get that information through that, or if you want something differently, you just would have to let me know how you would like that received or what you would like more of, then you can receive it.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And if you have a question, you can always just email it later after you've digested this.
I feel like I wanted to just keep going.
Just drop.
I was home in my mirror eyes.
At this time, this brings us to public comment. We do have one person, Dave Collette, will be here for public comment. As soon as Kyle's finished, you can step up to the podium. I'm not going to read the, the whole thing. The, there is a copy of it up there, and I'm going to ask you to just double-check it to make sure that you understand it and understand from your previous times where we like to be.
Is that for you? Your mic is here. You don't have to get close.
Hmm? Yeah, he's got one.
You're all familiar with me. I'm a, I'm a voice from the community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak a little. I took the opportunity for a look at the strategic plan and the district goals to consider what I as a member of the community might have as a plan and as goals for the education of children, for the operation of the, the school district as, as an important community entity. And I, I find that I'm much impressed, of course, with the goals that have been set here and the thought that goes into it and the, the work that goes into considering the education of children and implementing the, the goals of the, of the district. I, I think personally, I look to the benefit of, of children. We're, we're adults here and we, we want those children to have the, the very best that we can offer them as far as education goes. And my thought about education is that a love of learning and a pursuit of truth is what I consider to be basic matters of, of education for children and for all of us, really continuing throughout our lives, considering ourselves to be in pursuit of learning, in pursuit of the truth. And I consider truth to have a, to have a source. The source is God, and the messenger of, of God's truth is Jesus Christ. So for me, that's the direction I go. How are we for time?
I, no, we're, we're good on time, but let's just keep it to.
I'm going to mention the name of Jesus Christ again. May I? Is that okay? That's where I come from. That's the.
But it, that's your personal religious testimony.
That I come from, and that's what I want to declare. That's where truth lies. That's where I believe a person really learns their, who they are from the truth.
10 seconds, Dave.
Okay, how are we for time?
10 seconds.
Okay. I'm, I'm good. I'm good. Thanks a lot, Russ.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, 7.1, response from, our acknowledgements from previous public comment. We don't have any. And 7.2, I just wanted to discuss the board goals. I've sent out the summary of our board evaluation, and I hope you've all read that, memorized it, and are ready for next week to discuss what our priorities will be for next year based on what we've seen here today and where we need to be as, as a board, okay? Any questions on that for next week, next meeting?
We are next week.
Okay. Verbal reports, and we'll start out with instruction. Donna Rizzo.
Thank you. So we had a great opening with staff yesterday and today. Yesterday, staff were able to attend a variety of choice sessions opposite of our cell phone, internet device. I guess, presentation that we did for everyone. Variety of staff presented those choice sessions. We had 10 choice sessions that people were able to pick and choose and sign up for. So I wanted to thank Will Bean for helping to organize that with the superintendent and I and all the teachers who, our own people who presented. We have a lot of talent and a lot of knowledge and expertise in our district, so I wanted to thank them for sharing what they know with the rest of the staff. Today, principals had time with their staff in the buildings, and teachers had time in their classrooms sometime yesterday, some most of the day today to get their classrooms ready. So we are ready. I'm super excited to be in the buildings tomorrow and see kids and be part of this great team in Newark. So we're ready. Thank you.
Paul?
I have about four items. I guess I would like to start off by saying I've been stimulating opportunities, working with energy proficient, energy performance grants. I've been meeting with some vendors, seeing, seeing what can be done, been working with some of the other admin and people regarding capital projects, been working with the grants teams, looking for opportunities where we could actually generate some income that might offset some of the federal money that's been lost. I've been looking at contracts, seeing what could stimulate some additional revenue if we change from a vendor contract to BOSIs, if it would generate BOSIs aid. Obviously, next week I start with the audit. The staff has been ready and preparing for the audit. After that, we wrap up our year-end numbers, state reporting, and taxes are out and they're being collected and made our first deposit today.
Yep, mine was probably in it. Okay, Jake?
Well, for my first week here, it has been more than busy, as you can see from your addendum. You know, thanks to Sue and Donna and Paul, as well as the folks in my office and Stacy for onboarding me at like full speed. So we're in pretty good shape. We, we're in good shape compared to other years from what I understand in terms of opening with people on-boarded, onboarding, or already ready to start. We did hit a couple good lucky breaks with a teacher departure and then a candidate that was all soup to nuts, fingerprinted, certified and stuff, was able to start sooner than others might be able to because some districts hold their teachers for 30 days and so on. So we did, we did get lucky there in a couple instances, so the kids will have someone in the classroom tomorrow in, in some cases. There's more to come, so the next meeting, we're going to have more. We have postings that are out there still. Paul mentioned leveraging some BOSI services. Right now, we use the recruit front. I'm going to work with Erie One BOSIs who hosts the Winnebago application. It's, it's, there's a cost to it. I don't know it off the top of my head, as well as OLA. So that takes us from the Rochester area where we post now predominantly. It'll take us east, east and west a little bit to do a bigger candidate draw because we really want to see what we can do with the candidate pools that we have out there. We have some, some slots that we're contracting with out of lack of applicants, but we're in pretty good shape. I have a RASPA meeting, which is the Rochester Area School Personnel Professionals Association, so I'm going to try to tap into them for a resource for recruiting purposes. And next week I have an event with Exelis, our healthcare provider, so we can see what different options we can leverage, maximize, and, and provide to our employees.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan?
I would just like to echo what Donna said about our superintendent conference day. We're, we're very grateful for the people that did support and run those sessions. We have some extremely talented folks here that are able to provide in-house professional development, our instructional coaches, administrative staff, teachers, and again, Will Bean and Donna for putting together all of the differentiated sessions. So just to kind of review, yesterday we had the opening morning, my message, and then we, we opened the day with a comedian who shared some jokes and some laughs with the staff, a clean comedian for anyone who's wondering. So he is a teacher himself, so he was able to kind of hit home and be familiar with some of the humor. And then we went into differentiated sessions or a session on the cell phone ban. So we were able to address everybody, and I think the kids at the high school, at least the incoming freshmen, had opportunities to learn how to open their lockers. And Mr. Buckley has made a fabulous video that went out to all students about how to open lockers because we're bringing them back. So storage for pre-K to 2 will be locked, storage bins in the office. 3 to 5 will be in the classroom, and then lockers for grades seven through 12. And it is bell to bell, and it starts tomorrow. So I think everyone has been informed on that, and I'm just excited to see the kids tomorrow. It'll be a great opening day. I think we are prepared, ready to go, and close to fully staffed without gaps, so.
Excellent. Right?
Ethan.
Oh, Ethan. Do you have anything for us today?
I was hoping Brayden could say a bit more of this because I think he's planning it a lot more, but we do, I believe, have Senior Sunrise planned for next Friday. So we'll do posters in the parking lot, I think, half an hour before school, somewhere around there. But like I said, I don't know the exact time of that. And tomorrow, I was on the Link Leader team, as was Brayden, and we had already on-boarded freshmen with a bunch of nice information, but we're all wearing our Link Leader T-shirts tomorrow morning. So if any freshman need any help getting to classes or anything else, we should be able to get them there.
Thank you.
Awesome. Okay. Item nine, the review of the consent agenda and its amendments. Do I have a motion? Katie, seconded by Steve. Any questions? All in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Okay. Item 10, board development and committee reports, monitoring of the board. Do you have anything, Julie, on legislative?
Nothing. There's nothing new. Our first meeting is not this Saturday, but next Saturday, Sat, the 13th. Saturday. Yes, next Saturday. So we're kicking off our year, and we'll be reviewing the survey that was sent out to all the boards and concluding with if we need to change anything on the state position paper. So that's it for legislative. I'll have more next meeting.
NISBA, there's a list of conferences and stuff for NISBA. The annual conference is coming up. As far as the resolutions, the committee is going to send out the resolution book on March 19th, so we'll know if ours is in it. But when we start to get it, we're going to have to look at it to see, because as a board, we have to vote on those resolutions. So when it comes out, please look at it and go through it. And they're going to distribute the, the book on September, September 8th, the book comes out, and then we're going to, at a board meeting on the 17th, we're going to have to review it, the different resolutions. And then there's the, four county has a session where all of the four county boards just, you know, talk about where they are in those resolutions. And then two weeks later, there's another one with Regent, the whole Regent gets together and does a, a session to see how they agree. And that's where we get people to maybe sign on. If our, I, I don't know if our resolution is going to be in, recommended or not, but that's where we would, would start to get people to sign on for that resolution also. And then October 1st is when we have to have the, our, our decisions done for all the religion.
Resolutions.
Resolutions. And then I sit for that meeting, that's, that short little meeting from 4 o'clock till 10:00. Where I can plug it in the back, plug it in my, my earbuds and put, put my phone in my back pocket and just listen. So. Wayne Figueroa's BOSIs, anything on that?
Miranda.
Nope, nope. Yeah, Brandon, nothing. And we have not had our, our committee meetings as of yet. I see some of the committees have started to put out the, the invites for the meetings. Some of the others will soon, especially after the audit. And I think there's a facilities committee coming up at some point, and I'm sure instructional will come up with some at, at some meetings pretty soon.
I think all the, didn't that a ton of dates go out?
Yes. Policy did. Policy's always on top of everything.
Through the whole year.
Yeah. Policy's on top of everything. That's the most important we've got. All right. Item 10.3 is new. It is Board of Education verbal reports. And, you know, first, you know, we have to thank the person who thought of the calendar, Stacy. That was a great calendar, and it was great to see the standing ovation when Susan introduced her as having just a few years in the district. That was great. She deserves every minute of it.
She hasn't been here very long, so.
And she's only had one job. Two. But anyway, anybody else have anything for the good of the order?
I'm just going to add on the calendar, there was a lot of really positive public comments, both to me in person, as I saw people in the community or coming. both to me in person, as I saw people in the community or come in my office and honestly, on social media, it was actually a quite popular topic. Families were really happy to have a place where all the dates were in one spot. Community members were really pleased with just knowing when things were happening in our district in a place that seemed like it was going to hang on their wall. I think people will really keep that. It's a good use of money as well. You know, it's not just something they read and get rid of. So bravo Stacy, that was a great idea.
And the other thing that I see is when you go to the district calendar on the web, it looks the same as the calendar right here. So hopefully that'll stay up to date and that'll be good. So that's a good thing. Thanks, Kyle.
Oh, I forgot something. I'm sorry. I'll do it at the end.
Okay. Anybody else have any?
Just remind me.
Anything?
Yeah, just speak on the Wayne County Arts Council. Once again, our third annual Spooktacular is coming up in October. The event will be 17th and 18th where we have an open house, kind of a Halloween party. A haunted gallery and also a full gallery of Halloween-related artwork, many from our students here in Newark and around the county. So Alicia Lindsay is our president. She's the art teacher in Lyons and she's already sending out letters to the art teachers to solicit artwork from our students. So we hope to fill the place with that. Blacklight art is welcome too. A lot of the young kids like to do that. So we're looking forward to third annual, so.
It could be all my blacklights. Anybody else have any comments? Susan?
I just wanted to congratulate Kyle. He's got a very big weekend coming up. He will be off the market. So Kyle will be getting married. Who does? Hunter?
Hunter, yeah.
Congratulations to Hunter, too.
You're all locking it down now. Well, have a wonderful weekend and congratulations to you and Hunter.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, we have nothing right now for proposed agenda items. We'll put on some other... Screw you. Any other items anybody wants to put on for?
I got one. I saw an email for the concession stand working. So I'm going to forward it to you guys and you guys can give me feedback on what date we would like to go to work on the concession stand. So just look for your email from me because we got to do it really quick.
Okay. All right. Item 12, do I have a motion to adjourn? Matt, Katie, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, guys.